It is 1:30 on Friday, February 27th, and I'm going to call to order this special joint meeting of the Santa Barbara School Board of Education and the Santa Barbara City Council. And we will start by rising. Actually, I'm going to pause there because the city council does something a little bit different than we do, and what you do is roll call. So we will do the roll call first, if the city would so prefer. And, okay.
School Board Member Cordero. Shekin?
Here.
Herron?
Here.
Noel? President Parker?
Here.
Councilmember Falcone?
Here.
Francisco?
Here.
Cortez?
Here.
House?
Here.
Williams?
Yeah.
All right. And with that, we will now rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do have Spanish translation available for this meeting, I believe. All right. So, a Spanish translator will be available in the back of the room shortly. And we also have headsets for the hearing impaired. If anybody needs that, please notify one of the staff members on the side. Now, we will move on to public comments. And Mr. Herron, will you run the public comments for us?
We have three. Lanny Ebenstein, followed by Gerard Schwartz, and Raquel Bernaldo, followed by Kate Smith.
Mayor Bloom, President Parker, members of the council, members of the school board. The introductions practically take up the whole of my time now. The, I'm here today to address you with respect to an item that is of continuing interest between the school district and the city, but that, I noted, was not a separate agenda item, so I thought I would address it under the public comments. And that's the subject of 125 South Caie Cesar Chavez. And I believe each of the members of the council and also members of the school board have received a letter that I've written in that respect. And I'd just like to take this occasion to say, I think it's terrific that the school board and the city council are meeting together, and that there are many good projects that you can engage in. And one of them, I believe, and I think you'll probably talk about this to some extent on your agenda item, with respect to the National Guard Armory, but which I think is even more the case with respect to the 125 South Caie Cesar Chavez property, is the long-term desirability of trying to establish additional elementary school facilities in the city of Santa Barbara. And going back in time many years, the Santa Barbara school district made a very bad decision in deciding to close and sell four elementary school sites, Jefferson, Lincoln, Wilson, and Garfield. And as it happens, I think the city has acquired two of those parcels, Lincoln and Wilson, but that's waterlong under the bridge. But what that's done is that's left the community short schools in the downtown area. And I believe that the proposal that the school district submitted to the city in August with respect to attempting to acquire that site for its maintenance and operations yard, so that then in time, the maintenance and operations yard adjacent to this facility could become a, an educational site, together with the rest of this site, would be something that would be a great long-term addition to the community. So, my reason for being here today is to encourage you to work toward that goal. My understanding is that the council and
Thirty seconds, Lanny.
...school board at this point are discussing that possibility. And I would encourage you to continue further with efforts in that direction. It's a long-term project, but it's something that, if we don't, if we don't work to acquire that site, then we'll never have another elementary school in the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerard Schwartz and Raquel Bernaldo on Just Communities.
Hello, and good afternoon. My name is Jared Schwartz. I'm the Executive Director of Just Communities, and we've been working with the district, with educators, students, and parents since 2001. I'd like to take a short opportunity to just talk with you about one of our programs, the Community Leadership Institute, or CLI. Since 2001, Just Communities has trained Santa Barbara school district high school students to be more effective leaders and change agents, fostering respect, equity, and justice in their schools and their communities. CLI graduates are some of the most active leaders and activists in our community. Research has consistently shown that programs like CLI that engage youth in civic activism are more effective than traditional youth leadership and youth development programs, especially for youth from marginalized groups. I'd like to introduce you to Raquel Bernaldo, who's the program coordinator, who works with youth in the schools, and is working with your youth.
In 2002, CLI graduates from Dos Pueblos High School launched a Peace Week, which has now become an annual program in every high school and junior high in the district. Next month, CLI graduates at Dos Pueblos High School will expand the concept of Peace Week to create Ally Month, during which they will focus on a different form of inequality every week, helping students learn how to reach across lines of difference to support each other. In recent years, as reports of gang violence fill our newspapers and televisions, we often don't hear about the powerful work students are doing to prevent violence and create change. CLI graduates have been empowered to create their own solutions to some of our community's most pressing problems. For example, in 2005, CLI graduate Antonio, or Tony, Casada, from Santa Barbara High School, was inspired by a CLI experience to start the Dawn Riders Bike Club as an alternative to gangs. In 2008, CLI graduates Esther Flores and Andrew Sanchez from San Marcos High School planned and presented a school forum on the root causes of gang violence for over 300 of their fellow students and faculty. To this day, the student-planned and student-run forum remains the most sophisticated and in-depth discussion on gang violence that we have seen anywhere in our community in the last several years. And as we mark the one-year anniversary of the slaying of Lawrence King, as our schools in Oxnard continue to deny the impact of heterosexism and homophobia in their schools, Santa Barbara district is fortunate enough to have an active gay-straight alliance that has, that is active in each of its high schools, started by all CLI graduates. So these are just a few examples of the things that your students are doing in the school district. And to create more inclusive spaces, the next CLI or Community Leadership Institute will take place in August, of August 8th to 15th. Please contact me if you have any questions. My contact information is on the flyers and registration forms that you have. We'd also be happy to come back and deliver a formal presentation. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you very much, and good luck, August 8th through the 15th. We'd like to know, we'll learn more about that.
Members of the city council, members of the Board of Education. I'm very glad to see this joint meeting. Education is the nation's largest and most important industry. There are several books, websites, institutes, and movements in our countries, in our country to expose school corruption, and they are found on SB School Talk. One, School Corruption: Betraying Our Children and the Public Trust by Armand Fusco. Two, Battling Corruption in America's Public Schools by Lydia Siegel. Three, PolicyExperts.org has put out Corruption in Public Schools by Neil McCloskey. Four, Road to Nowhere: Illusions and Broken Promises in Public Special Education. These are all found on SBSchoolTalk.com. School corruption is rampant, and retaliation is severe. Mayor Bloom was at Roosevelt when a case against a parent started. The police, our city police, were called to arrest me four times. The first time, it was under a statute that allowed the principal to call the police against a pimp, a child molester, or a drug dealer, but it excluded parents of the school. I was arrested under that statute, it was false arrest, and I called Debbie Flores, and I said, "This is false arrest," and she said, "So sue me, Kate, because the school district has unlimited taxpayer-paid lawyers to fight parents." Susan Bilig was the librarian that year, and anonymous complaints against school district personnel were ignored. So she signed her name, and she was transferred. This was the same year that she had written a grant to convert the library to computerized operation. Pamela Holst was my daughter's teacher. Pamela Holst?
Thirty seconds, Kate.
Pamela Holst was designated Santa Barbara's Teacher of the Year that year. And because we had worked so well together, and she stood up for my daughter's right to a free and appropriate education, the Teacher of the Year was transferred out of this school. I was illegally disqualified from the Santa Barbara school district.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to item five, Statement of Purpose for Joint Meeting.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
We do have translation. We have Esperanza Villegas.
All right. Wonderful. Would you like to come up to the podium and introduce yourself?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas, y estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes necesita ayuda, me encuentra en la parte trasera de esta sala.
Thank you. So Statement of Purpose for Joint Meeting. Mayor Bloom, is there anything you'd like to share?
Sure. No, it's just, it's always good to meet with the school board. We do this twice a year, and I think the dialogue goes on in between meetings, too. It's a very wonderful relationship that we have now. And, you know, we're all very proud of the kids in Santa Barbara. They do a good job in learning, and that's up to you all. And it's up to us to make sure that we have a safe, clean city for them to grow up in, and indeed, we do. So, I just think this synergy between the two boards is very wonderful. We haven't, you know, since we have been meeting together, we have really been working on a lot of projects together, and we could go over those, but, you know, instead, we're just talking about this meeting, and it's just absolutely a good idea for us to do this.
It does feel like a constant collaboration
Yeah.
...at this point, which I think is great. And beyond the services that the city provides for our students, the school sites are a resource for the city, and for our adults in the community as well. And I think that there's always going to be great opportunities for further collaboration and other exciting projects to do. So, with that, we'll move ahead. We do have several items on the agenda that are written reports only. I will read their titles out, so that members of the public that are watching this know that they can go to either the city council website or the school district website and see these reports and read them. So, we had an update on the joint city-school district programs and agreements. That included information about things like field maintenance, after-school programs, and the Ranger Program. A report on school districts and city collaboration on environmental and sustainability programs, which included recycling and waste reduction, among other things. A report on the status of city projects, like Safe Route to School and city construction projects near school campuses and Plan Santa Barbara. Then there was the report on status of school districts' projects, which were things like the career technical educational pathways, student achievement, and the next steps on implementation of Measures H and I. Report on status of work underway to resolve overlapping city and school district land title interests at various school campuses. It doesn't sound very interesting, but it actually is fascinating, and it's a very big deal, so I was excited to see what's going on with that. And then, finally, the report on the status of efforts to acquire the National Guard Armory and the Fremont Hall Army Reserve Center. And again, that sounds like steps, it seems like a process that is taking so long, but it's great to see that there is progress, slowly but surely. And then, with that, we are up to item 12 on the agenda.
Madam President?
Yes?
We do have public, or comments on item six and item nine.
Super. So let's hear those public comments, and then we'll also see if there are any board members or city council members that have any questions about those.
On item six, David Pritchett.
Good afternoon. I'm David Pritchett, a Middle West Side resident. Don't know a lot about the school districts not having kids nor expecting to, but it's the second time I've been here this week, so maybe I'm learning more. I just put item six as a discussion point, because everything as the update is interesting, so I just picked the first one. And I also need to go in a little bit. But I can, can point out that the city's moving along with the Jake Boisel Bike Path, because I made the motion at the Transportation Committee to move that along. Not that that's a surprise. But I also want to encourage the city people to be really creative on finding a place for the California National Guard and the Army Reserve for their alternative facilities. The staff report today was a little light on what exactly they need, but at least one of those two very similar agencies, the Guard and the Army Reserve, may have something at the airport. Anyway, there's the hard way and the easy way to do it, so I hope the city can be creative and do the easy way, so this can happen. Otherwise, I don't know the details. I also want to encourage the city to collaborate like this with the other school districts, you know, say Hope School District, if there's any opportunity there, as well as Santa Barbara City College, which I know is an administrative universe in itself. But as, as agencies have less and less and less money in their budgets, I think there's a lot of overlap to gain efficiencies. And I don't have any specific list today, but it's something I'm interested in, to be talking with the public in the next few months. So, what I would like to see in your discussion, and I'll be watching on the TV replay, is how do people think the school district and the city are saving their mutual budgets by these collaborative projects? And it may not be easy to tease apart the number, but I think the public would like to know a little bit on, you know, if they did it separately, what would it cost versus collaborating? And especially for treating a lot of our public schools like de facto neighborhood parks. You know, I go to Lacumbra School all the time, and it looks and feels like a park to me, especially because the gate's always open. So, that would be good to know as well. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Kate Smith, item number six.
I'm not sure if you're following Los Angeles, but on January 10th, National Public Radio had an hour-long program about their work on youth violence, and their discussion concluded that what they were doing was not working, and they were going to think outside the box. And a lot of the discussion here, in terms of after-school programs, I, I'm very disappointed about your one page of after-school programs, because what we need would be programs to engage the students in activities that they are interested in, that are already actually being provided in the private sector, but that the private sector would appreciate your help. For example, there's a surf-to-turf, or turf-to-surf program, and I met the fellow. I would ask that the Santa Barbara school district join with these guys that want to teach kids how to surf. You would be opening up a whole new world. Two, I've been trying to get hip-hop and flamenco dancing, and all of the movement that kids want to be a part of, I'd like to see that instruction and the opportunity for their involvement to be provided by the schools. Right now, there's a recreation program on the school campus, but it's, it does not limit, it does not offer much in the way of instruction or specific activities. I've totally lost my train of thought, but basically, it's that we have to work with the parents, with the kids, offer what they want to do, engage them in school
Thirty seconds.
...and to mentor them. It turns out that Lance Armstrong is on the web. He had ADD, and his teacher said, "Oh Lance, I'm so glad you found cycling, because we thought you were headed to the penitentiary." He found cycling. All of our children need to be offered a path to their bliss.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
All right.
On number nine, Gerard and Alma.
Hello again. You all have the written report from the school district on student progress, student achievement, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the Institute for Equity in Education, which is a four-and-a-half-day residential institute we've been partnering with the school district on since 2005. The goal of the institute is to help educators understand the root causes of academic achievement gaps, and be able to address those gaps in ways that eliminate them. It's grounded in the latest research that shows time and time again that the three biggest predictors of academic success for students are school connectedness, teachers' expectations, and quality of teachers. In other words, the three Rs: relevance, rigor, and relationships. This research also suggests that interventions focused on changing the culture and climate of the school is far more effective than interventions focused only on the individual student or family. I'd like to introduce Elena Marie, who manages the IEE program, to tell you a little about the success of some of the graduates.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to be with you, and it's truly an honor to work with the graduates of IEE, the educators in our schools, who are working so hard to make a difference, often through collaborations with parents and with students. And the things that they're doing range from weaving things into their everyday practice in their classroom, to policy and cultural, culture shifts at the school. That's what really give each student a pathway to success and equity. Some of the examples in terms of feedback that we hear from IEE grads consistently is that because of the program, it's really helped them to feel more comfortable in working hard to create equitable and safe environments in their classrooms, or responding to things that come up as, as they happen in the moment, taking advantage of teaching moments. Improving communication between teachers, counselors, administrators, and parents to try to come up with creative approaches to discipline and academic struggles that are less punitive, and really look at the root causes of what's going on with a student. Increasing representation and diversity across the board, whether it's in clubs, advanced classes, leadership opportunities and programs at school, and so forth. One of the concrete examples I wanted to give was out at Dos Pueblos High School, where just last fall, they eliminated arena scheduling to implement a computer system that promotes fairness and equity for all students in their registration, registration process. In November, we collaborated with DP to offer a training for students, parents, and staff to come together and have an open and honest conversations about issues of equity.
Thirty seconds.
A parent from that was, who's on the PTSA, was inspired to create an Equity and Excellence Committee at DP. And now, some members of that committee are working with Spanish-speaking parent leaders through our Family Dialogue Program to come up with an Equity Action Plan at the school for parents, so really, coming from those multiple perspectives. We would love to have council members and school board members at the upcoming institute, July 6th through 10th. You all have a registration packet. Please let me know if you have any questions about it. And also, we'd be happy to come back and make a formal presentation and give you a chance to hear firsthand from some of the educators who are making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I want to chime in, that I have been hearing about that process out in DP, and been very impressed with how motivated the parents are, so that's great. For the public comment?
No.
Okay. Board members, city council members, any questions or comments on any of the written reports? Okay. With that, we will move on to item 12, the Presentation on Response to State Budget Crisis and Economic Crisis.
Making this presentation is our Deputy Superintendent Eric Smith.
Good afternoon, members of the school board and city council. I'm Eric Smith, Deputy Superintendent with the school districts. I was asked to put together a brief presentation with respect to the current budget crisis, and how it affects our school district, and actually, our district's response. And so I put together a PowerPoint, and I'd like to walk you through it. It's fairly brief, and then there'll be an opportunity for questions and answers at the conclusion.
I think everybody knows that the state's been grappling with a $41.6 billion budget crisis.
He won't be on TV.
A $41.6, $1.6 billion crisis. That's an extrapolation over 17 months, and it's inclusive of the requirement that they maintain a $2 billion reserve. We know that that crisis was precipitated by both a collapse in revenues, which is about 75% of the crisis, and also an increase in expenditures at the state level of roughly 25%. And this describes some of the characteristics, primarily driven on the expense side by the increase in caseloads. You can see that the shortfall in revenues was really attributed to property tax decline, sales tax, and a large part, the decrease in capital gains. One of the issues that makes the state budget so volatile is its heavy dependence on capital gains. You can see that steeply progressive tax rates result in fewer taxpayers providing most of the revenues. The top 1% of all taxpayers contribute almost 50% of personal income tax revenue. And the dependency on capital gains make the state budget very volatile. On a longitudinal basis, this is what it looks like over time. As you can see, 99-2000, that's the bust in the dot-com bubble, and as you can see, we took a sharp decline, and then basically, you see another ascension, and then you can see the decline in the housing and credit markets in 2000, and what's happening there. As we know, after a long period of time, I guess long wouldn't, wouldn't do the, that word doesn't do us justice, a long, long, long period of time, the state was finally able to arrive at a state budget deal. It required not only five extraordinary sessions of the legislature, but a lockdown in the Senate to arrive that deal. We know that the state budget was basically put together through a one-third, one-third, one-third approach, with a third decrease in expenditures, a third increase in revenues, and a third relative to internal and external borrowing, which will probably portend problems for us in the future. These are the revenues. I'm not going to get into it, but that's a kind of a detailed list on the income side. How that affects us is on the expenditure side. We take some significant mid-year and next-year budget cuts. We had a .68, a paltry .68 COLA that was applied to our revenue limit. It was repealed. We took a revenue limit cut of $160 per ADA, which is about $2.2 million for our district in the current year, but that's far less than the $4.3 million that was originally envisioned in the governor's January/December proposal. And then we'll take a separate $944 million statewide cut, or about 15%, against all our state categoricals. School districts receive restricted program money basically from two sources, the state and federal government. This 15% reduction in current year only applies to the state. Then on top of that, the state has proposed that we use a variety of mechanisms in terms of being able to move restricted money over to the unrestricted side to mitigate some of those cuts, and they basically did that in a three-tier approach. The first tier are the ones, those state categoricals that were held harmless. The second are basically categoricals that will basically be subject to a 15% cut, but we don't have flexibility. And the third tier, which in our district now, as people are starting to know it, is Tier Three, are those basically programs that were not identified in the first two lists, and we have total flexibility relative to not only moving the current year entitlements from the restricted to unrestricted side of the ledger, but in most cases, if we had restricted ending balances from last year, we can sweep those from the restricted to the unrestricted side of the ledger. The categorical flexibility also allows us to suspend deferred maintenance, because what's happening now is that we participate what's happening now is that we participate in what's called the Deferred Maintenance Program, which is a 50-50 matching share program where the state gives us an apportionment and we have to match it on a dollar-for-dollar basis. The state's going to continue giving us the apportionment, but we basically have the matching share contribution suspended. And all this flexibility actually extends from this fiscal year, as of now, through fiscal year 1213. In fiscal year 910, we take another cut in the categoricals, about 4.5% as well as no COLA, and we also take a $45 per ADA cut in the revenue limit. And for everybody's benefit, the revenue limit is basically where we get our unrestricted dollars through state aid. Some of the major exceptions relative to budget categoricals is that we can't sweep 89, but we can sweep 0708 for any educational purpose. And another highlight is there was a proposal on the table that would basically reduce our Reserve for Economic Uncertainty requirement from 3% to 1.5%. That was rejected by the legislature. Our current reserve is hovering around 8%. So what about federal stimulus dollars? We stand to get significant increases in Title I, and we may be getting some dollars through IDEA, which is the federal component for special ed. However, historically, the state has had a habit of glomming on to some of those dollars as they've not passed through on a dollar-for-dollar basis, and even if they're passed through the state, they have to make it through our SULPA, which is our local joint powers authority that deals with programs for special education. There's a second pot, which is called the Budget Stabilization Pot, and basically California will get $6 billion there. We believe that it's going to be distributed for use either for Title I, for special ed, and/or school construction, and I think the board will have discretion over which categories they go into. 81% of those federal stimulus dollars in the second pot are controlled by the governor, which should make you nervous. I know it makes me nervous. So given what we're seeing here, which is about a $2.8 million loss in revenue in the current and next year on the unrestricted side, we know that we're going to have a structural deficit, which we define as an ongoing imbalance between revenues and expenditures. We don't know exactly how big that is. We'll be putting our second interim report before the board on March 9th, and we'll be able to identify that amount that we have to cut, but we're already formulating our response. Our district's response to the state budget crisis was to, one, institute a spending freeze on all general fund expenditures, including state categorical programs. Last year, we did something similar, but we did not freeze state categorical programs because we didn't have the flexibility provisions. And as I like to say, there's always a premium on unrestricted dollars. We get lots of restricted dollars, but unrestricted dollars, we can do whatever we want with in terms of discretion. We implemented a freeze on overtime and extra time. We're identifying vacant positions that can be left unfilled. We're replacing only those positions that are deemed mission critical. We started dialogue with our unions regarding the state's fiscal condition and its implications for our districts. We're engaging all stakeholders on how to reduce expenditures and increase revenues, including the superintendent and I are visiting all school sites to solicit input, and we're also finding out that we're dispelling a lot of rumors at the same time. The board has adopted a timeline for making both mid-year and budget year reductions. Obviously, to preserve our flexibility, we have to go through a painful noticing process of a number of our certificated employees because that's prescribed in statute. We're putting together a plan, which we've entitled a Fiscal Solvency Plan, and it will look very similar to the plan we put together last year, which is basically an attempt to comprehensively address everybody's comments, even knowing that some won't save money, some might be illegal, some might not be politically feasible, some just plain don't save money. And we will basically put that out in terms of the number of cost-cutting measures or revenue-increasing measures that the board can consider. The first reading of that plan will be April 14th, 2009. Second reading and final reading of the Fiscal Solvency Plan will be April 28th. At that point in time, we will embed those recommendations into our budget development process, and unlike the state, we will adopt a budget prior to June 30th. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. That's kind of a brief summary of our process, which looks very similar to last year's process.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Horton.
Eric, I'd just like to make a comment. I serve as Chair of the Finance Committee for the city, and before that, I was in charge of the budget at UCSB, so I have some familiarity with these matters. And I would like to say that in times like this, it is even more important that we consider the impact of arts and athletics on the lives of our kids as they go through school. I'm a product of the local school system all the way, and I know it was very significant for me. I'm calling upon the entire community to work together with us and with you to try to preserve these kind of programs. It needs to be a public-private partnership in these times, I think, but we simply really can't let these programs fall at this time. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? All right. Mr. Armstrong, are you presenting at this time?
Mr. Pearson, our Finance Director, will make the presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the council and the board. My name is Bob Pearson. I'm City Finance Director, and I want to start off by saying that we're in a little different situation. I mean, it's all bad, but the state budget has affected the city far less than the school district. Obviously, we're less reliant on direct state aid, and for once, the state this year seems to have left cities pretty much alone in terms of resolving their budget crisis to the extent that it really was resolved. They did not take any monies directly away from cities this year, and so we're thankful for that. And really, what we have to deal with is the, I noticed the agenda item was titled Response to State Budget Crisis and Economic Crisis. I think the schools are dealing with the fallout from mostly the first half, and the city's really dealing with the fallout mostly from the second half, which is the economic crisis. And I'll give you just a quick look. I know there's a lot of numbers, but I'm only going to focus on a couple, so it's not as daunting as it may look, I hope at least. These are, you know, the thing we're facing is a significant budget gap, like the schools and the state, for the balance of this fiscal year and for next fiscal year as well. We're kind of looking at an 18-month timeframe as well. And while our costs continue to go up, the revenues have been dramatically affected in some cases by the economic situation, and unfortunately, in many cases, we still don't have hard data on some of our more important revenues in a timely way. Sales tax is an example, which is the one I want to talk about first. The top row of this table, if you just focus, we can have a thank you. Yeah, baby. Now if I can figure, there it is. This is the current fiscal year, and this is next fiscal year. And if we just take the top row, which is sales tax, you can see that I think that we were fairly conservative as we put together this year's budget about a year ago. We projected sales tax to decline 0.3%, basically to be flat, which at the time, it seems like a long time ago, about a year ago now, much of the stuff had yet to hit the fan, and we thought that was fairly conservative. But as you can see now, this year, we're projecting that sales tax is going to be down almost 8%, which is a loss of about, for us, a million and a half dollars in revenue. And for next year's sales tax, despite what this number says, it looks like we're silly in expecting it to grow over 2%. That isn't the case. That's a technical accounting cleanup. Really, we're projecting sales tax to be flat for next fiscal year, which may in the end turn out to be too optimistic, but for now, that's what we're doing. But you can see that had caused us to have to lower our sales tax estimate for next year by almost $2 million. Property tax, ironically enough, is one of the bright spots for the city, despite the fact that median prices are down 30 to 35% because of the way property tax works in this state with Prop 13 and with people having locked in assessed values from the time they bought their home. Even if a home is worth 25% less than it was at the peak of the market, if someone sells today, the chances are the property tax value of that home is still going to go up dramatically, and that has, that quirk in Prop 13 has allowed our property taxes to continue to climb. And working with the county, we're projecting a 3% growth in our property tax next year. The other most significant local revenue source is our hotel tax, the transient occupancy tax, and you can see that we've had to lower our estimate this year by half a million and for next year by almost 1.1 million. In summary, just from these four revenues listed at the top, and the other one is the utility users' tax, we're projecting next year, we had to lower our revenue estimates by almost $3.5 million. And then, can we slide that up just a little? And if we just look at, in summary, the next sort of four or five larger revenues, including investment income, we've had to lower those about another million one. So combined, just in seven or eight revenues, we've had to lower our estimates for next year for, by almost $4.5 or $5 million, and that's just sort of the starting point. Just a quick look at the sales tax, only to point out that last fiscal year, you can see that four, three of the four quarters, we were down, including 7.5% in the June 30 quarter, and down 2.5% for the whole year. We're projecting 3% decline for the balance of the year. This is what I was talking about, not having timely information. We are still waiting from the, on the state for our December quarter-end sales tax information. We don't get that until it's a quarter in a row. We will know that by about the third week in March, and of course, by that time, you know, the horse has sort of bolted the barn, as they say. But that's a quick look at just the sales tax, four out of five quarters in a row now down. And then on our bed tax, this fiscal year, we felt pretty good the way we were starting, up a couple months in a row, but you can see that the last five months have all been down, and November and December were double-digit decline. You can know times have changed, that when we saw that the January number was down 1.8%, we were dancing in the halls of my office because we were frankly fearful of another double-digit decline, and it was only down 1.8%. So we're down only half a percent this year, but we were expecting to grow over 3%, so it's a fairly sizable gap. With that, by way of background on the revenues, we have to do some hard, there you go, thank you. This is just a quick look at this fiscal year. We started with a balanced budget. We now are having to lower our revenue estimates by about $2.4 million on tax revenues alone. We're having to lower our fee and service charge revenue estimates by almost $1.5 million. Ironically, parking violations is one of them. The bulk of this number here, the 1.1 million, is community development fees, building permits, planning fees. As you can well imagine, with the credit crisis, development has kind of ground to a halt, and our revenues in the planning area and building safety area have reflected that dramatically. And then we had some other adjustments totaling $2.8 million, the bulk of which is a surplus we expected to end the year with, that obviously isn't going to happen at this point. And these are actually, for the city council members, you may have seen or may not seen in your packet yet, we're going to be presenting the city council with our mid-year budget review this coming Tuesday, and we had been projecting about a $5.5 million gap for this fiscal year. Because of some of the updated numbers now, we've had to go back, and that number has now grown to $6.7 million. So even, we've added, had to add a million two, and we'll be, of course, going over that in more detail with both the city council finance committee and the full council next Tuesday. So that's a million two more than we had originally projected just about six weeks ago. We've made a commitment to try to keep from using our depleted reserves for the balance of this fiscal year. We've asked departments to save $3 million. We're using some of the reserves that we have in the budget, appropriated reserves, really a contingency fund that's in the budget. We're drawing down on some of our workers' comp reserves, which are greater than what the actuaries say we need. We're taking some money out of our street sweeping fund, which was generated by parking citations. We are reducing our capital program by about $725,000, and those are the savings we've identified so far. As a result of having to adjust the revenue estimates up here, we now have about a half a million dollar gap again that we're going to have to go back and readdress. So that's what this year's looking like. Next year, unfortunately, is grimmer, more grim. We started with a projected deficit next year of about $2.5 million, and here's the revenue adjustments again. You can see that just from these, what, four or five revenues, we had to lower the estimate by some $5.7 million. Then the departmental revenues, there you see the building permit fees again, the parking violations and some other charges, $2.5 million. So total revenue reductions from preliminary projections, about $8.3 million, and this is on about a $107 million general fund budget. So that brings us there, and with the original projection of two and a half, and we did identify about $2.2 million of off-the-top savings, we were looking at about an $8.5 million budget gap for next year. Because the revenues continue to run away from us as a result of the economy, we felt it was imperative to add a cushion to that, and so we did. We've added a $1 million cushion to that, and so we have, the gap that we're working to resolve is really a $9.5 million gap next year, which represents about 9% of our general fund budget. We do have reserves. We have reserves totaling probably about 19% of our general fund budget. According to the policy that was adopted in 1995, we should have about 25%, but we've been forced to use some of our budget reserves over the last couple of years, so we're not up to the policy levels. The last look I want to give you is our preliminary strategy for closing the gap for next year. We've identified some one-time items that we could use, and as you can see, they're really, we're not planning to use or recommending at this point to use a lot of them because this is really a structural problem, and one-time solutions really just kicks the can down the road, and I'm not sure that anyone has any confidence that this thing's going to turn around in the next six or nine months. I hope the Fed Chairman, Mr. Bernanke, is right when he says that he thinks it might. We've got a reduction in our capital program of about $800,000. We are talking currently to our employee organizations about both furloughs and the elimination of provisions within our bargaining unit agreements that allow vacation cashouts once a year, if we can get those, and those are certainly obviously subject to meet and confer negotiations. We've plugged, however, $1.5 million into our balancing solution to account for being able to accomplish that. In addition, we've talked about structural changes of a half a million dollars, and structural changes frankly is a euphemism for cost shifting, for shifting costs out of the general fund into other of the city's enterprise or special revenue funds, where it is appropriate and legal, and I think that there are examples of both, legal and appropriate, and we're considering those. A half a million dollars of reduction of charges from operations like motor pool and building maintenance, sort of spreading the pain around. And the bulk of the number, $6.3 million, will come from departmental budget adjustments, and those are really budget reductions, and our departments are at work on developing their budgets over this period of time and through the end of February and into early March. If all of that happens, then there's the $9.5 million. I will say that because of a number of reasons, that $6.3 million departmental number, if you go down to the bottom here, we added another $2 million to it, so this is a second contingency on top of the $1 million I mentioned earlier that was really, the first million's really revenue-driven. This $2 million, we've asked the departments to come up with their share of the $6.3 million on one level, one tranche, if you will, and then on a second level, add another $2 million to the problem, if you will, and ask departments to come up with a second level of adjustments that would add $2 million to the reductions, and that will allow us some flexibility as we consider what reductions and when the city council considers the budget, starting in mid-April. If they care to adjust some of the staff recommendations, there will be an additional list of items that the council will be able to go to, to keep the balance, the budget in balance. And that really is about all I've got to say at this point, is be glad to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I have to say that school board members, I think we've kind of been feeling sorry for ourselves, and now we feel really sorry for the city council. Anybody have questions or comments on this report? Mr. Heron?
If none on that, I'd like to go back to our report. I came up with three questions.
Okay. I do still have one, maybe for Mr. Pearson or maybe for Mr. Smith, so I'll address that one quickly, and then we'll move on to Mr. Heron. One of the things that I noticed is, for our district, we are looking at the property tax within the city limits, and it does have an effect on our budget, and there's a discrepancy between our estimates. We estimated about a 2% growth, whereas you've estimated about a 3% growth, and I'm just wondering if maybe both of you could talk about where you get your estimates from on the city property tax and its growth. from on the city property tax and its growth.
I'd be glad to say that we've been working with the county assessor's office. We have obviously contacts there. You know, we have basically talked to their office, and they were saying to us what they thought they were seeing, both in North County and in South County, and specifically within the city limits. And when, after that conversation, we felt that 3 percent was reasonable, and they certainly concurred that that seemed reasonable. Now, a lot of it for us depends on supplemental property tax, the supplemental assessments that happen through the years. You know, we will know our secured role very soon. And, you know, it depends on the supplemental, and, you know, whether we're pushing that 3 percent is a little bit aggressive, I don't know. We're certainly going to make it this year. We're going to be about 3.2 or 3.3 percent growth this year. We can say that with pretty good certainty at this point, and so we don't see anything that would cause us to revise that down dramatically to, say, 2 percent next year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Similar response, although we looked historically what was happening in the elementary district relative to property taxes, and basically, year over year, it's about seven to nine. And then we basically tempered that down to two, basically through, I guess you'd call an abundance of caution. And then we've also had conversation with the auditor controller's office, and our numbers are probably fairly conservative.
Okay.
If I could add one more thing to that, and that is that I think we have an advantage built in over the school district, and that our revenue sources are probably more diversified than yours are. And I think that allows us sometimes to be a little more optimistic, because if one revenue's off a little bit, we have another chance. An example's our redevelopment agency, which is a single source of revenue essentially, which is property taxes. And in the redevelopment agency, we generally will budget more conservatively than we will in our general fund for property taxes.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Heron?
Yes, that was one of mine, too, and I sure hope both of you are right. But as I've said, at the school board, I have a letter, email from Joe Holland, that says after they redo the re-evaluations, which they haven't done yet, he perceives that the county will be 1 percent, but that the Santa Barbara School District will be somewhat better. Now, whether somewhat better is 100 percent better or 200 percent better, you know, I just hope both of you are right, because we're happy with either number. The second is, my colleague down here, Roger Horton, and I both, 50 years ago, graduated from the school system, and we both got through because of music. And we were both in the band together, and Roger still does his music. But in light of that, I thought maybe, since it wasn't mentioned, that maybe something on H and I, which is music, might be apropos to bring the city council up to date on H and I, and maybe the rest of us. And then, two, Mr. Smith, you didn't mention basic aid. And I know that all of our colleagues up here have received emails from concerned citizens about what we did with basic aid before and after. And so maybe you want, might want to bring us up to that on basic aid. It is obviously a very current topic, and it's going to help us get through next year.
I'll take basic aid, and basically, I'll take basic aid for 100. To understand basic aid, you have to have a fundamental understanding of the current system that we operate under, which is called revenue limit. Out of the thousand school districts in California, about 950 or so operate under a revenue limit basis. And the revenue limit was created after the Serrano v. Priest decision, which basically identified for each type of school district, and when I say type, I mean elementary, unified or high school district, a distinct amount of unrestricted revenue per student, or what we call now average daily attendance. That's, you know, a ratio of their attendance to enrollment. So elementary districts unilaterally get the lowest revenue limit, unified get in the middle, secondary or high school districts get the highest amount. The revenue limit, the reason it's called a limit, is because you only get that amount per student. It can be adjusted by cost of living adjustments that can adjust it upward, or it can be defested by the state that drives it downward. So if you're going to look at the total amount of revenue you get under revenue limit, let's say we have, for argument's sake, and it's not, let's say the revenue limit was $5,000 per student in the elementary district. You take that times, you multiply that times the total number of ADA or students we have, and you come up with a big pot of money. Okay? Here's the distinct thing about our characteristic of revenue limit. Revenue limit has two components, state aid and property taxes. And there's an inverse relationship between the two. As your property taxes increase, the state reduces state aid, okay? So what that means is that they will, when you start reaching that limit or threshold, and let's look at it at a micro level, let's say you had a $5,000 per student, and let's say it was a 50-50 distribution. Let's say 2,500 of it was state aid, 2,500 of it was property taxes. Well, if your revenue limit, the property tax side of it grows to 3,000, then state only gives you 2,000. Your property taxes grow to 4,000, state only gives you 1,000. When your property taxes go to 5,000, the state gives you nothing. And when you go beyond the 5,000, as long as it's all property tax-based, you get to keep all those property taxes above and beyond that limit. So whether that's $1 above it or $10,000 above it, you get to keep it. And we, I'm doing it on a micro level, but if you did it on a macro level, in terms of the big pot, that's the benefit. You're no longer dependent on state aid, and you're also not playing by the state's rules. And basically, local property taxes that are generated locally get to be retained locally as well for educational purposes. Is that a fairly good description of basic aid? Okay, so do you want me to go to the next piece?
Why did we do what we did?
Yeah. Well, a couple of things. The variables that drive basic aid or revenue limit are enrollment, your cost of living adjustment or a deficit on your revenue limit, and property tax values. So if you make an assumption that your property tax values are going to increase, let's say 2 percent per year for several years, and your enrollment is declining, which decreases state aid, or if you have a deficit on your revenue limit, and what I mean by deficit, the state is giving you 89 cents on the dollar or whatever, what happens is that entitlement, the top, the threshold, is reduced. So as your property tax grows, it's easier to get beyond the entitlement and get to basic aid status and retain all those excess property taxes. Well, as I said, the things that drive state aid up are cost of living adjustments, where we're not seeing any of those anywhere in the near future, and increases in enrollment. Decreases in enrollment take you the other way toward that threshold. So if you have inter-districts, and they can go back to their district of residence, it's basically stimulating a pattern of decreasing enrollment, it's bringing your revenue limit entitlement down, at the same time that your property tax trajectory is going up and gets you to basic aid status.
Let me just add to that. What the board did on Tuesday night was to deny inter-district transfers, in other words, send students who are here in the elementary school district on inter-district transfer from Galita, from Hope, from Ventura, other outlying communities, back to their home districts. The district does have a provision to keep sixth graders next year who are on inter-district transfer, their younger siblings for a year, and children of employees. But in so doing, the district avoided some of the huge consequences that come with Eric's previous report. And that is that if the state economy and the state budget for education means a cut of some $2.8 million to our district, that means, in revenues, that means that we're looking at serious cuts to be made this spring. Now, one of the things you saw in his report was a flexibility provision. There are many school districts across the state that are teetering on the brink of bankruptcy. They're not holding even the 3 percent reserve, and we're well above that at this point in time, but we expect to be burning that down. And they're looking at one of those provisions, and that provision is class-size reduction for grades kindergarten through third grade. Currently, we get money from the state, as do almost all school districts in California. Some abandon it because we don't get enough money to pay for it completely for class-size reduction. So our kindergarten through third-grade classes are being run at 20 to 1. The state, in providing this flexibility, says that they will give us up to seven, excuse me, 70 percent or more if we abandon class-size reduction. Now, if we just add one or two students at each grade level, they would still give us some 90 percent of that money. If we abandoned it altogether, and we increased class sizes to 27, 29, 30 students in every kindergarten through third-grade class here in the elementary district, and laid off a third of our class, a third of our staff, a third of our teaching staff, they would still give us 70 percent of that money. Seems implausible, right? Well, this is what school districts across California are counting on to see them through this crisis, because they know, as we do, and as you've heard, that this is not going to be resolved in two years, or probably even three years. I mean, it's something that's with us for a long time to come. So in making the decision that the board did on Tuesday night, it was a very human decision. They were faced with a very tough dilemma of turning back some 180 children, and of course, their families have been involved in our schools. It affects the schools themselves. But they put that up against the other very human decision about abandoning class size, allowing class sizes then to reach very high levels, 26, 27, 28 students, and dismissing one-third of our teaching staff. They were able to avoid that in the decision that they made Tuesday night. Now, measures, may I take door H and door I? Measures H and I were a wonderful show of support on the part of the community for things like music in elementary programs, additional music and arts classes at the junior high level, and these would be outside the school day, they'd be after-school activities, but they'd be very much a part of these kids' extended school day, additional foreign language classes in junior high and high school, and additional materials all the way through in math, science, and technology. And we will provide those over and above what we have provided in the past. We will in no way be making any cuts, that we'd be backfilled by these. We'll have, we've already appointed citizens committees, they will be in place to oversee this process. And it was just a tremendous show of support on the part of the community, and a tremendous testament to this community and their support for things like math, science, technology, art, performing arts, music, and foreign language.
Thank you, because there's already comments out there in the community that we'll just take the H and I money and help, you know, the budget situation, and we need to make it very clear that these supplement current programs and not replace current programs. I appreciate those comments.
Just two words, absolutely not.
Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Sarvas, question for you. Transfer policy, is there an appeal process on yet?
Yes, there would definitely be an appeal process, yes. And there may be some hardship cases that the board will want to consider, or the board will want to turn over to staff or staff to make some determination. Good.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Deacon?
I just wanted to follow up on the appeal process. We already have an appeal process, it's part of the board policy, and so I think we're going to come back and look at perhaps some of the other issues surrounding that. But we definitely already do have that appeal process. And I also just wanted to address the measure I issue, and how that kind of intersects with the decision the board made the other night, because I think that as our community overwhelmingly supported this tax on themselves, I suspect most of those voters believe that that money would come to the children that lived in their district, and so that was an important consideration as well.
The reason I asked the question was I've been contacted by some single parents that this may prove to be quite a hardship, so that was the reason for asking it.
Thank you. Mr.?
One of the things in keeping with the comment that was made earlier, that I will be interested in, if there is even any possibility, is to what degree would collaboration or coordination of efforts between the city and the school districts be helpful in either of our budget dilemmas? So when we look at our Parks and Recreation Department, and, which could be vulnerable for some of these cuts that we were talking about, and then we look at the school districts and the fields that you have available, I have no idea if there's some way that we can be helpful, or that you can be helpful, or how we blend those together, but that's something I'm definitely interested in, and in hearing. Even the idea that it would be of value for us to really get our heads around this and work together, get around the table, roll up our sleeves, I'd be very interested to hear that there's that possibility, and then perhaps get our teams together to work on that.
We would be happy to meet on that. The collaboration that we've built, especially with Parks and Recreation and after-school activities, and Parks and Recreation bringing other partners into that, so that they're very diverse activities, and they're provided at all of the schools here, as well as, you know, Parks and Recreation also provides the after-school program at Galita Valley Junior High. Well, through a couple of mechanisms, the City of Galita kicks in $17,000 to that. But once again, that's a good example of an area where we're very appreciative of the City of Santa Barbara for stepping in and providing services to all of our kids, even though the kids at Galita Valley Junior High are not City of Santa Barbara students. We have developed quite a dialogue. In fact, we met just the other day, Sarah Hannah, it looks like she's left, but Nancy Rapp is certainly here, to review upcoming programs, to review the participation of the Police Activities League, PAL, in that process at the junior high level. And we'd be happy to have more dialogue about it, because I think you're definitely on target there, you know, we're probably all looking at potential problems.
It seems to me that there's, there certainly will be opportunities. We've already generated a track record of these, where the private sector also gets a chance to participate, because they see the collaboration, it's of interest, and then we can achieve some grants that otherwise wouldn't be available. So again, in that interest, perhaps it would be good to broadly notice those kinds of meetings, encourage people to participate. There may be opportunities of other foundations who would like to contribute and participate, but especially to going to the arts, as well as to activities after school. These are important enrichment, but even more, I think they're fundamental to really good education, and we should work together. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes. Thank you very much, Dr. Sarvas. I think, just following up on that a little bit, the universe of the South Coast recreational opportunities is an equation that is long, long past needing revision. We have provided a lot, you've provided a lot, there are other institutions that provide a lot of opportunities. But as with, as we'll hear next, the, a lot of the organizations that deal with youth, and youth violence in particular, and underserved communities, as well as, as we just went through in the city, the providers that provide for the homeless and the disenfranchised and vulnerable communities, these organizations that provide recreational opportunities don't really work together enough and effectively. I know that we have, our institutions have, we have a lot of cooperation, and quite a historical, a history of working with after-school programs in particular. And now, Galita is involved with their after-school program and picking up the, some of the expense that the new City of Galita has a responsibility of doing, and they're stepping up to the plate. But I think in these times of budget crisis, we are presented with an opportunity to reconfigure the universe, if you will. We have many other private and quasi-public institutions, there's Page Youth, there's Ealing's Park, there's UCSB, there's the Ivy Parks District. There are a lot of folks out there, and I think that are collaborative and pulling folks together, because relationships going forward in the next couple of years with our budgets are going to change, make no mistake about that. How and what it looks like into the future, I don't know. But I think it's an exciting opportunity if we actually take it and step boldly into a place where we now have two successful models to build upon in terms of collaboration and rejuggling our circumstances. successful models to build upon in terms of collaboration and rejuggling our circumstances together. So I look forward to that, and I hope this board also does because our relationships are going to have to evolve into a new age of cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have public comment on this?
Kate Smith?
There is a serious disconnect between the administration of schools and the schools. The school administrators are involved with money, and that's all they deal with. There are two seminal documents about school funding, How Schools Get Their Money by Jonathan Kaplan and District Dollars by a team from Stanford University, Susannah Loeb. It was funded by the Bill Gates Foundation, James L. Levine, and Hewlett Packard, on and on. Anyway, it all comes down to the fact that we know where the money goes. It goes into administration. And when you go into, well, I shouldn't say it that way, check on page seventy-six for basic aid, summary of basic aid, there is no increase in student spending. It's exactly the same as the other districts. There is an increase, a hundred and seven percent increase in capital outlay, and there's an increase in administrative funding. So how long do you think they're going to allow basic aid status? And the elephant in the room, as I understand it, is that you get out from under, no child left behind. Wouldn't that be wonderful for the elementary school district that has only one school that's not sanctioned under No Child Left Behind? That would be open alternative school. People flock, families flock from all around the area. Sixty-four students essentially would have to be expelled from open alternative school. There is no talk, not one mention, of children, of curriculum methodology and assessment in all of your numbers, that's all you're dealing with. But we, the people, the families, the teachers, the parents, we talk about our children, about their strengths and weaknesses, about their ability to communicate, express themselves, to solve problems, to resolve conflicts, to cooperate with others, to grow up to be healthy, happy, and successful democratic citizens in the 21st century if you continue to focus on the money and what you don't have and where it's going to go, which it is not filtering down to the children. It is not filtering down to programs to support teachers and their education. If you don't stop this madness, we can unravel as a society. Our children cannot grow up to be functioning democratic citizens. I'd like to ask Eric Smith if Santa Barbara School District owns the FICMAT program to deal with the CSAM and the SACS.
Your time is up, Kate.
Do you own the program to do the budgeting?
Can you ask, I have to ask him personally?
Thank you. And I do want to make one correction because we have fourteen schools in the elementary district and only three of those are sanctioned under No Child Left Behind, so I don't want that to hang out there. Mr.?
I would like to make one comment, too. I would urge all citizens to watch, all that are here is to watch the school board Saturday night at five o'clock and watch the section on basic aid. And I don't think you can leave that discussion without thinking that human cost was considered very deeply by all five board members. And we all recognize the specialty of the schools we have and how the children are going to be affected by this. So if you have any questions whatsoever, ever, that you think it's only money, watch it, and you'll see that we all care very deeply about the children.
Thank you. And with that, we are moving on to item thirteen, which is the presentation on the school districts and cities' collaboration in response to youth violence. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, President Parker and members of the board, and Mayor Blum and members of the city council. I think this is probably, this is the third time we've given a presentation to this joint meeting on the progress we've been making on efforts to reduce youth violence. And for some of you, this will be a little bit repetitive from what you've seen in the past, and for others, maybe the first time you've seen it. And I think we've made a lot of progress over the last, really, about fourteen months. And so, the next one. Presentation today, okay. First, we're going to talk about the background on what we've been doing over the last several months, some of the highlights of our accomplishments to date, and then I'm going to ask Don Olson and a group of folks to talk about our next steps that we're planning to go forward with. So first, in terms of background, back in January of 2008, the city convened a half-day work session with forty-five different agencies and organizations that are dealing with the issue of youth violence. And we reached a consensus on the scope of the challenge and really a highlight of the need for increased coordination and collaboration. And we've said this before, this community is resource-rich, but it's, in many cases, it acts in silos. And rather than look for new resources, we felt that, or the group felt, that we can get our most bang for our buck by increasing coordination and collaboration. And this is very consistent with also the direction that we've received from our city council over the last, really, about eighteen months, is we need to get the folks working together more carefully and closely and increasing that collaboration. In March of 2008, we had the first of eight meetings of, really, community meetings to talk about these issues and how do we get there and increase that collaboration. And the attendance started with around forty-five or fifty. By our last meeting, we had over a hundred attending from throughout the community. We formed two working groups. One was a group to talk about just last summer's program, and then a second one to look at a longer-term strategy, how do we go forward and institutionalize our efforts? Then again, in September, in fact, right around the same time we had the joint meeting with the school district, we made a report on our summer program, we talked a little about our bridge program, and I'll talk a little more, and then the long-term strategy. You may recall in September, something else happened, and that was we had the economic crisis really hit. And a lot of our, I guess, our wish list of what we wanted to do was impacted by the financial situation. I mean, we had to be realistic, and so we had to scale back some of the things that we wanted to do, but I think you'll still be pleased with the progress we're continuing to make. And then just a couple of months ago, we made a presentation on what we'll call Matic, and I'll talk a little bit further about that, and on our long-term strategy and where we're going from there. So first, let me talk a little bit about some of the accomplishments we've had over the last, about a little over a year. First, one of the areas that was identified early on is there was not a good inventory of all of the organizations that are dealing specifically with youth violence. And so we've endeavored to create an inventory of those organizations. If you're a parent who's looking to get help for your child, or if you're a teacher, or if you're somebody else, and there's lots of inventories out there, but inventories that deal specifically with youth violence. And so we've developed, and still, we've got three different inventories. One is part of the 211 program. The Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission has developed an inventory. And then on our own city website, we've got an inventory that's probably the most comprehensive inventory that we've been able to develop. We're in the process of putting together a handbook, it's just about completed, something that's pocket-sized that we can give out and widely distribute in the community. And we're also developing a separate inventory of various funding sources that are available for different kinds of programs. Now I want to talk a little about the summer program that was done last summer. And you think about it, we started getting together with folks in late January of last year, and then very quickly decided we needed to do something last summer. There was a crisis in the community, how are we going to deal with it? And it was really an amazing model of just getting folks working together from governmental institutions, the schools, the nonprofit community, and how could we do something quickly for last summer? And it was a phenomenal ad hoc effort where essentially no new resources were added. We just pulled people from different organizations, your school district, Fred Rosso from county schools, and put together really an amazing effort to assess specific kids who are at risk, develop individual plans for those kids, put them together with various services that were available in the community, from nonprofits, from governmental agencies, help some kids get jobs, and then try and measure the results and having very detailed metrics. And we were real pleased, it was one of those ready, shoot, aim. It wasn't perfect, we learned a lot from that, but we were real pleased with the results. And you can see here, we dealt with eighty-two kids, thirty were secondary school graduates who were already graduated, we had fifty-two secondary school kids, we had kids going to summer school, we had kids on probation, and you can see some of the results we had there. And Fred really led that effort in terms of especially developing the metrics on that. But it was a good test of the model that we had there. At the end of the summer, we said, what are we going to do with these kids now? And so we also developed a bridge program, very, and in close consultation with the school district, really worked well together, to get those kids that we've been working with over the summer, okay, how do we then get them dealing with the counselors and continue to provide them services over the year? And so you can see that we sent fifty-two briefs to school counselors to continue to provide those kids services this school year. And we were real pleased with that, but it was difficult because a lot of the folks that we used this past summer, they had to go back to their regular jobs. Once school came back in place, they had to continue to do their regular work. And we suffered a little bit in that area, but I think we felt good, the progress we made. A huge area was the improved coordination and cooperation, merely getting folks in a room on a regular basis and talking with each other in a positive way. The energy in the room was just incredible, and I think, I can't underestimate or understate how much positive feeling we all had and the progress we've made, and in a very professional way, and folks weren't just fighting for resources, they were saying, how can we work together and achieve some really positive results? And these are some of the examples. One of the groups that was formed is the Matic Group, which, help me out what that stands for, Nancy?
Making a difference intervention.
And these are some of the groups that deal directly with kids and gangs. Zona Seca and the Youth Media Project, All for One, Matt Sanchez is a group that's had just some amazing results, Y-Strive, Primo Boxing, somebody mentioned earlier, Turf to Surf, Los Compadres, that's done by Community Action, and La Cuesta. We also put together a program to get kids jobs, we worked on that, the county got a grant and they hired a group called SER. We worked with the housing authority who's trying to put together a city core group, City College, the state was involved with EDD, and we even had local employers, several of them, volunteer jobs over the summer. We got together with the various parents and family programs, again with the housing authority, Esperanza was involved, Solutions for People. Many of these were programs that were already going, but the important thing is that we got much better collaboration and folks talking and working together. Neighborhood-based programs, the Restorative Justice Program, neighborhood centers are involved, Collaborative Communities Foundation, Fernand Serat's group that's really just come on the scene in the last eighteen months. And again, school-based programs, you're very well aware of Planned Parenthood, the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, again, CCF, Recording for the Blind and Dyslexic, and mentoring programs. We're, Chief Sanchez especially was involved with UCSB Latino Business Association to help link them up with a program at Santa Barbara High School. And also, it's important to mention the various governmental agencies involved, the city, the school districts, County Education Office. In County of Santa Barbara, they're so huge and have so many silos that it's important to mention them individually, the probation department, county sheriff, the Department of Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Services, and then the Department of Social Services, and the Workforce Investment Board, which helped us on the jobs program. In some cases, it was amazing to have folks from county government meeting each other for the first time in the meetings that we put together because their organization just are so large. You know, these programs are important, but it is also important to have good law enforcement. And it's important to mention that our police department, as well as county sheriffs, have been very busy the last several months on the enforcement side. We have school resource officers in your schools, they're active, they work well, very closely with the principals and assistant principals. We've combined our youth service officers group and our narcotics unit so we can move resources around more quickly and carefully. We have weekly meetings now with our gang suppression team and the folks that are working to coordinate efforts with folks in the community. We've done additional training for the police officers for gang enforcement and intelligence training. And I think most of you are aware that we had a major law enforcement operation in October 2008 where we collaborated with the federal or the U.S. Attorney's Office in Los Angeles, with a couple other federal agencies, with state parole, as well as all of the law enforcement agencies on the South Coast, and had four hundred police or law enforcement folks that gathered at the Earl Warren Showgrounds in one day, dealt a real tremendous blow to a lot of the gangs in the community. It's probably one of the largest law enforcement actions ever on the South Coast, and for our officers, they said it was the largest they'd ever participated in. We're also trying to get additional grant monies to support these efforts. There's two through the CalGrip program, these are monies that are controlled out of the governor's office. One we have not, we were not selected for, and this was a joint effort by the county, the county office of schools, and also your school district. We were hoping to get five hundred thousand dollars over two years. We still have one pending for CalGrips through the Office of Emergency Services, and you can see all the players there, for a four hundred thousand dollars over two years. It's not mentioned here, but one of the other, I guess, collaborations we formed is we've been working closely with the foundation community in Santa Barbara, we've been keeping them informed of what we're doing, and we're planning to go to them and talk to them about funding some of our efforts. And at least two of the foundations have expressed a strong interest in participating in this, and it's been, it's really, really good to work with them so closely because they have a real interest in what we're doing. The second part of our activities was to institutionalize our efforts, to, you know, it's in times of crisis, oftentimes folks come together, but then when things calm down, the programs will tend to fade away. And so we really wanted to institutionalize what we're doing. And so we had a group of individuals that met over the summer to develop a long-term strategy. And you can see some of the players we had, we had the county sheriff, we had the chief probation officer, Brian was involved, the police chief, Fred Rosso, Penny Jenkins from the nonprofit community, Fran Foreman, Community Action, we had Chuck Schlosser from the Santa Barbara Foundation, another from county probation, and some city staff that really spent a lot of time saying, how do we come up with a long-term strategy? And we talked a little about that with you in September, we've pretty much now finalized and are going forward. And I'm going to turn it over to Don Olson, who is, Don is a, many of you may not know, but Don's a, he's an hourly employee in the city, he's retired, and I have to tell him to go home at night, and he's our special projects coordinator, and his new title is going to be the executive director of our, of the South Coast Gang Task Force. And he's going to do that in a limited number of hours, but I think he's going to do an outstanding job, and he's going to present the next steps as a part of our long-term strategy. Is he ready?
Thank you, Jim, and now it's time for me to go home. Which one of these do I?
Right eagle's forward.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, President Parker, and Mayor Blum, and the council members and school board members. This has been a really important work in progress, and I think you all have, over the last few months or so, have seen the intensity of the effort that's gone into this. You know, we're still moving forward, there's still a lot of work to do, and it's very important that all the parties that have been involved stay involved. And the structure that we've pulled together to help keep this ball rolling really has three primary components. The leadership, which involves both a leadership council, which would include elected officials from all the government agencies on the South Coast that have either mandated roles or law enforcement roles or social services, along with other community leaders. With them, carrying their direction forward is an executive council that would essentially be the chief executive officers of all of those government entities and the major nonprofit organizations and so forth. organizations and so forth. Carrying that direction forward, looking for opportunities for further collaboration and coordination, and helping pull together the resources to keep it, keep it in place. So that's one major component. Another major component is really where the work begins, with the kids that are the focus of this effort, and that's the caseworkers, the outreach specialists. And Fred Rozo will talk more about that in his presentation shortly. The third component really involves the numerous nonprofit organizations and social service providers that have more of a prevention and intervention role. And you saw in the previous slides, the MADDIC groups, or the groups that are involved with MADDIC, the various groups who are working in the schools today, along with others in the community. Kind of the glue that kind of keeps this together is a very limited staff structure that I'll be involved with in helping to coordinate. But what really keeps it alive is the commitment to deal with this work and to keep this work moving. Strategy, the basic game plan of, that you saw in the summer program slide, is really focusing in on the kids who are in trouble now, or at higher risk of being in trouble, working with them individually, with caseworkers, and connecting them to the resources that are gonna help them with whatever issues that they need to deal with. And, you know, it may not look complicated, it may not be that, but when you start looking at all the different agencies and nonprofits that are involved, it takes good effort, and sometimes there's a little bump and grind involved, but it's important to keep it going. And your leadership, your commitment to this long-term is critical. To give you an idea of already who stepped forward with committing key staff for this, County Office of Education, Fred Rozo's shop, the Juvenile Court and Community Schools Division, they've stepped up to take the lead on working with the caseworkers, the outreach specialist team. They've committed a full-time staff person for that effort, as well as staff who are administrative and technical support. Your school district has already engaged many of the counselors that Fred's been working with, with the bridge program, and you've now recently hired a full-time caseworker that will be part of this team as it evolves. In addition, with the city, our office, of course, is very engaged in this, our Parks and Rec Department, not just in terms of coordination with the prevention intervention team, but obviously in their mission in terms of recreation and programs, and community services. And our Police Activities League earlier was mentioning that their role in after-school programs at the junior highs is going to be expanding, and we're real encouraged by that as well. And last but not least, two nonprofit groups, the Community Action Commission and CADA Fighting Back, have stepped up with providing, not just their, the ongoing counselors that they have in various schools, but they've stepped up with their grant writers. They've offered their grant writers their work, they helped put together the two CalGrip applications, and the CAC grant writer is currently working with the MADDIC group on another grant application. So, next steps. Here, I'd like to turn it over to Fred, who's gonna explain more in detail his work with the caseworkers and the outreach specialists.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the board, pleasure to be here. What you have before you there is a triage delivery of services, and this is a model that we've now incorporated, though it is a work in progress, but based on the outcomes we had this summer, and we were happy with that. It was a, you know, an aim and fire type of program this summer. We, you know, we stepped forward to take the effort to work with referred at-risk young people, and with that, we were gonna make those results transparent, and that's what Mr. Armstrong had presented earlier. And so, we were ready to accept whatever outcomes there were, and we were happy with the results. There was, one of the bullet points there was a, of the eighty-two minors that we worked with this summer, forty-three were on probation, forty successfully completed their terms and conditions of probation, and we had a ninety-three percent success rate with that. So, not having any idea how that, the outcomes were going to be, we were quite pleased with that. So, with the triage delivery of services, the intent and premise behind that is that each individual that will be referred to this, this group, will, with the caseworkers and with the team that'll be on the second slide, that we will create an individualized plan to attempt to meet the needs of that minor and their family, and certainly recognizing that there is no such thing as a cookie cutter plan when you're talking with, about individuals and minors. So, so what you see there is, we have education, we like to take the education, you know, in equal balance with the human services and probation. So with education, we would, you know, coordinate with social services and probation, provide counseling, we have counselors that are available and ready, we've been in communication with them at the school district level, that's where the minors would be coming from, we're targeting the South Coast, those minors would be involved with either the Santa Barbara School District, or Santa Barbara County Education Office schools, and possibly carpentry. So with that then, it's very important to provide a relevant plan for that minor, to determine where, you know, what is their standing? Are they credit compliant, are they credit deficient? Do they understand where they are? And then creating a summer plan, so you, you look at each case individually, you develop that profile, and most importantly, you have the minor and the family understand what we're looking at, and we join partners. And then we have the human services aspect, that, you know, that we're working in conjunction. And then we have probation. So, as a partnership, we are, we are far beyond where we were last January when we had first discussions. And as Mr. Armstrong had explained, having meetings together with these agencies when they, when, even though they're all part of the county agencies, and they hadn't been in meetings before, and now putting those forces together to work individually with each of these minors is very exciting. So that was the plan, that's the premise of the triage, delivery of services model for each individual student. So the idea is to, is to communicate, collaborate, and coordinate those services, and try to avoid duplication of those services. Again? Okay. So on the caseworker outreach specialists, we are currently waiting for referrals from probation, they're one of our partners, so we'll be getting referrals from probation, and that, and that referral process has been formalized by them, we'll await those referrals, we'll be looking at each case individually, and then coordinate what type of outlining services that we can work with for that individual and their family. The Continue Organizing Internet Agency team, you know, we just have a dream team here, as far as I'm concerned, though this is still a working model, so we'll be adding to that, but currently, we have commitments from the County Education Office, County Probation, the School District Counselors, Santa Barbara School District Counselors, our gang outreach workers, Los Compadres, Los Comadres, CADA and Fighting Back Youth Service Specialists. So this, those teams are currently committed to our program, and we certainly look forward to adding to that. And so, once the referrals come in, we'll get together with the committed agencies, and then we'll, we'll look at who our clients are and who our referrals are, and then, and then we'll, we'll work with them and develop that triage delivery of services. Being that we are now, end of February, early March, coming forward, by the time we get these referrals, we'll be developing the plan quickly, we've got the resources of the school counselors, we've got the, the, the schools are in place now, so it'll be very important to get the referrals forward, to look individually, what do these young people need, and how can we help them before the summer starts? So we're looking at, you know, are they credit compliant, do they need to go to summer school, do we have a number of those referrals whose young people have already graduated from school, and what can we do for them during the summer? Do they need jobs? Do they need some assistance getting into Santa Barbara City College? What are their vocational needs? But it, it all gets back to the individualized plan, it gets back to the caseworker connecting with the, with the minor and their family, and that was, and that's why we were so, so successful this summer, is that it was that personal relationship that was built with each of the minors, and that's just key. You know, we can talk all we want about what we need in the plan, but it's really the boots on the ground, it really is that personal one-on-one relationship that, that they've built with each of their cases. And, and to hear the caseworkers, if you had any, if you had an opportunity to listen to the caseworkers themselves, to talk about the program and their experiences, and the experiences of some of the youths they worked with, it was very heartwarming. Back to, then, the caseworkers establishing relationships, that, that's key and critical. And then the referral procedure process, that's ongoing, but we are expecting referrals very soon, and then preparing for, as I mentioned, summer school, for those, for those young people that it's needed, and Santa Barbara City College, job readiness and prevention and intervention programs with MADDIC. The key is, a lot of these at-risk minors that will probably get referrals on, they're, many times are not connected with school per se, so they're not the young people or families who seek out the school counselors. So we wanna make sure we have someone that's able to take them to the counselors, and then we'll be keeping track of the number of counseling sessions they've had, what was their academic standing, you know, prior to our engagement, so we'll be doing pre- and post-measurements on that, and we're looking forward to that. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rozo.
And now, I'd like to ask Nancy Rapp, our Parks and Rec Department Director, give you some highlights of what's coming up on our prevention intervention work.
I don't like playing with these things while I'm talking, so I just like it up there. Good afternoon, and I just have to say, some of us have seen this presentation so much, but each time I watch it, I gain an appreciation, because we've been in the midst of doing it. I gain an appreciation for all that we've accomplished, while I clearly see all that we have yet to do, but it really is a lot of work. My role, and the role of my staff, is to help formulate the prevention and intervention programs. As we've been through this process, we've learned a couple of key things. One, there are a lot of great programs in this community, especially on the prevention end, and they don't necessarily need our help, we need, of course, to make sure that they're continued to be funded, and that they're effective, and all of that. It's more on the prevention end. What we've found is that when we go back to that model of looking at the, what do the youth need that are most at risk of being involved in a gang, or their lives being affected by affiliation with a gang, that there are very few organizations directly working with that target, targeted population. And so, what we are trying to do is to identify, what are the services that that group needs? And this connects with what Frank was talking, Fred was talking about, with creating the plan. And so, we're looking at, what are the services that are out there that exist, and connecting them with the youth through their plan. Also, we're trying to identify maybe the, to help facilitate the collaboration and the networking and the coordination between them. Some of you, Jim mentioned earlier, MADDIC, Making a Difference Intervention Coalition, this actually is a group of six to seven organizations that have known each other for a long time, they actually have credibility amongst each other for working effectively with the youth most at risk. Most of them are grassroots organizations that live on a shoestring, and face, you know, they don't have effective fundraising, and they face their doors being closed, because they're too busy providing services to actually do a lot of what a nonprofit needs to do to succeed, and yet, they're doing the work. And so, one of the efforts that we've had is to really see how we could help those organizations strengthen themselves, so that they can continue to provide the services. So we've worked with them to help form this collaboration. They are, this week, submitting, they were asked by a funder to submit a funding request, they've come together as a group, they have now finalized that, and they're submitting that request. So, that's part of our role, is making sure that we can help resources get to those organizations. The second bullet, one of the things that we learned last year, everybody got focused on, how many kids got jobs? Well, we certainly learned, it's, you know, it would be really, really great if they all got jobs, but frankly, most of them, the effort was spent on job readiness, teaching them and preparing them to learn how to be successful once they get a job. And so, we spent a lot of time working with local programs through the schools, and the college, and the county, to get them engaged in work readiness programs. We also have some apprenticeship programs, and we also did end up placing youth in jobs. So what we are doing is, from our experience last year, we've been trying to get even more ready for this summer. We've been working with the Workforce Investment Board, we already know that we're gonna get some of the job stimulus funding for a particular program through, that will be enacted by our Creeks Division, and working with our Parks Division for some restoration at Parma Park, so that's one of the exciting things. And we are also mobilizing for our summer program, and that's in a more general way, looking at some of those programs, and then the networking, and, and helping to implement the plans. And lastly, we've really also heard from parents in the community about the need for parents to know where to go for more assistance, know, there are organizations that provide support services to them, but they don't always know who they are, they don't know how to connect with them. And so, we're looking at our, the city has two neighborhood centers, the east, the Franklin Center, and the Westside Center, and the Lower Westside Center, and we're trying to look at, how do we use those facilities to offer more of that engagement? And again, we're trying to be more targeted and focused in our effort, because, as I said in the beginning, there are a lot of great programs out there for prevention, and Parks and Recreation, that's mostly what we do. But the need here is really more of a targeted effort, and, and working from an intervention perspective. So, that's our focus, we obviously have our hands full, but we're looking forward to it. Any questions?
No, actually, you hit on it right there at the very end, when you corrected something that was just slightly misstated in the beginning. It's really important that people understand that in the prevention arena, there are a tremendous amount of resources that are on the ground, nonprofits, the schools, the after schools, we're all involved with that. But it's the intervention piece, as you said, the boots on the ground. In the beginning, you said, again, prevention, and I just didn't want there to be a misunderstanding out there. It's the intervention piece, where we're lacking the actual relationship building that Fred spoke about, and so, I just, and you hit on that, you cleared it up at the end, so I just, thank you.
Mr. House?
Yes, Nancy, just two things. One, specifically to you and to your, as the director of our Parks and Recreation Department, departments, I guess, in any case, to what degree, given the budget environment that we're in? Any case, to what degree, given the budget environment that we're in, are your efforts in this area vulnerable?
Well, probably on all areas, because we're looking at some pretty steep cuts. And not just our department that affects this effort, but just speaking specifically to Parks and Recreation. I think that we'll see some reductions in some of the programs that we offer that are more on the prevention end. We actually, in facing our budget reduction, have given some priority to what are the current community priorities, and this is one of them. So we have tried to preserve resources and look at how we can restructure to have more of a focus on this. So I think the concern is to retain funding for those programs that we are currently offering, that really encourage positive growth in children and youth and young adults. And I think, from a staff perspective, the staff to be able to support those efforts. So I'm being a little vague, because we haven't, you know, presented our budget yet, but we are very concerned. And I will speak for other programs as well. We've been talking with nonprofits that are severely impacted by the current economy, and they provide some of these services. And so it's a challenge for the community to, we have this great need that we've all focused over the last couple of years about how do we serve them? And now, in this fiscal climate, we're struggling even more. And I don't think there's an easy answer for that. And everyone is very concerned. I'm sorry, I couldn't be more specific.
Well, I appreciate your frankness. One of the things that we don't want to let go by, when you mentioned prevention at the beginning, there are literally thousands of children and families who participate in our city's programs and the programs of these nonprofits you're talking about. And at some level, those are truly preventative. They do keep kids out of trouble, they guide them into a very positive future. And then we have this intervention where we've got a very narrowly and targeted, focused group of troubled youth or youth who are likely to get into youth violence kind of situations. And we've really focused on that in the intervention piece. I'm concerned, of course, that if we take our eye off the first ball, you know, we could really have a larger-focused group on the intervention side to deal with. So I think we really have a, as you said, it's a lot of difficult decisions in front of us. That was my first question, and I think the other one, which may go perhaps to Don or to the larger team, and all the work that we've been doing over this past year and a half or so on this, and it could go back even further, if you think of the earlier iteration, seems to be forgotten kind of at the moment when there's another incident. Or at least, people are concerned that it's not being effective, that we're being soft on crime, that we're being not effective because we're so into the worm and fuzzies or something, and we don't seem to deal with the enforcement piece. So what, I see our police chief here in the audience, I'm wondering, maybe you can, one of you can start to address this balance that we have to have with enforcement, as well as the intervention and the prevention. Somehow, all of this has to come together, right? Or else, you know, and then what do we do when we have another incident of youth violence? And how do we respond to that? Because the community then sees that as evidence of failure, to some degree. So it's a tough set of questions, and maybe part for you, part for Don.
I'll answer, and then I'll defer to Don and others. But I just would remind the community that this problem, these are societal issues, and they don't get solved overnight. If it was easy, every community in America would have solved it. And, you know, there will be setbacks, because people make choices in their lives. And so we just have to have a framework in place, which is the institutionalized effort that we've talked about. We have to, you know, keep focused on what we think is the answer and just keep moving forward. And unfortunately, there will continue to be incidents, and it's sad and it's a loss, but we have to keep focusing on moving forward. So, Don?
Thank you.
And Don, I would hope that you would take a moment and address the balance part that I was just talking about.
Yeah, well, and this gets to, I feel, where we're headed, in terms of moving forward with the leadership component of this. We're holding next week our first meeting of the Executive Council. These are the CEOs of the government entities and the major nonprofits and foundation folks, the business community. And it's a kickoff meeting. It's a meeting to get organized and to get focused and actually then move to establishing the Leadership Council for this South Coast Task Force. And we're looking to hopefully have the first meeting of this council in mid-April. And this will be the opportunity for the leadership to come forward and basically make it clear to the community and to all of us that have been working on this, that this work really needs to not just continue, but we need to do better. And I think it's important that we all recognize that, as Nancy was referring to, this isn't going to go away overnight. This, and it was one of the most important things that came from the initial work session we had back in January of last year. This is, this has to take a long-term commitment. And it's not just focusing on the kids who are in trouble or who are at high risk. The work that is going on at the elementary and preschool level by various groups and organizations is also critical, because we're dealing with essentially the kids who are coming from the systems and the efforts that haven't worked, family structures or whatever. And we need to be looking to preventing that stream continuing by going back and working much more diligently with the families and the kids at that early age. And that's going to take many years. I know there's a lot of good stuff that's in process. A couple of weeks ago, Chair, President Parker and Board Member Heron were at a presentation by the United Way on their initiative, which is coming forward in the next few months, called, what is it, Partnership? The Power of Partnership? Poppy, whatever. And that's, the focus of that effort is on the kids at that early age and doing basic things like helping them learn to read, so that when they come to school, at kindergarten, they're ready for school. And that they can meet those standards at a very early age. So get ready. Along with establishing that leadership structure, we clearly need to develop an evaluation system that lays out what we're looking to achieve, how we're going to do that. And, you know, we want to build on the state of the art that's out there. We're blessed in this community by having a university that has a School of Education that has done some great work on this. We know what we need to be doing, what we need to be looking for. It's a matter of putting together and targeting to the population that we're working with here. And of course, getting the word out. We need to have much more aggressive public outreach effort, not just to the community at large, but to the parents and the families in the neighborhoods who are experiencing most of this activity. So, look forward to, we're going to be asking you, the school board and the city council, to appoint representatives to the Leadership Council. This will be happening soon, as well as it'll be going to the Board of Supervisors and the other two cities and other community leaders. And we're going to be continuing to ask for your support and direction on staying committed to this. It's going to require some additional resources. We're going to need your help in pursuing those additional resources. But what we've certainly learned over the last year or so is that we can accomplish a great deal just by getting in the same room, talking, focusing, and going from there. Taking responsibility for doing what we can with what we have. And so that kind of is the closing for it. Here to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Guidero?
First of all, I'd like to thank all four of you for a presentation that helped make a lot of this even more clear, as we've gone through it before. And I know that in the discussions with the public and among the participants, that there's recognition that there's an affective component to this, and not only, but, well, let me make my question clear. We've looked today, or we've highlighted today, the areas where we're focusing on how we want the youth to change. And I'm wondering if you could highlight, any of you could highlight the areas where we're looking at making systemic changes in the institutions that change the environmental, you know, influences on the young people to help sustain that kind of change?
Well, clearly, the organizational structure and the triage that Fred explained, and the focus of our whole, not our whole effort, but the core focus of our effort over the last year or so, has been to challenge those that have mandated roles and the organizations that clearly have other kinds of roles in this work. To set aside whatever, you know, keeps them from coming together, to come in and focus on, how can we do our work better? How can we work together better? How can we help each other? How can we reach to, in some cases, be very specific to a particular kid or his family? It's been really interesting to see what evolves. And I think you've all experienced it in your own arenas and in your own life. When you challenge people, when you ask people to come together to focus on a community issue, and you challenge people to, okay, how do we do this? And you come and you give your ideas, and people come up with good, not just good ideas, but they make a commitment to do something. And 98% of what you've seen here about what we've accomplished has been from that goodwill. I just made that up, in terms of the 98%, but it's true. It's the goodwill of the people who are in the room, at the table, collaborating on wanting to make our community better. And I trust that, as long as that remains, you know, the primary focus of this organizational structure, that the professionals who will be doing the casework and the professionals who are within the intervention groups and so forth, that their work is only going to be more productive. And your work, your work of, your counselors, your teachers, is only going to be more productive.
Any other questions or comments at this time? I believe we have public comment on this item.
Yes, we have six or seven. So even though you have three minutes, you don't need to be obligated to take all three minutes. Mr. Cruz, followed by Jacqueline Inda, followed by Eddie Gonzalez.
Who's the Chair of the Body?
That would be me.
I wanted to pose a question, if I could articulate my concerns first in Spanish and then repeat them in English.
Sure.
Thank you. Mis palabras hoy al representados elegidos de putados de Santa Barbara. Mis palabras son para traer atención al punto de la agenda numero trece. Estas palabras son real de un perspectivo del programa de Up to Us y la comunidad y esperanza. Mis palabras son para pensar afuera, afuera del cuadro, por las raciones de los servicios tradicionales en Santa Barbara, comunitarios y servicios sociales y servicios de jóvenes. El modelo que está presentando el fundado de educación está correcto y tiene mérito. Pero si vamos a ver eso, vamos a ver el departamento de provación en ese modelo. Provación va a continuar a desarramar las atenciones académicas de los estudiantes. Esto es para continuar el sistema de harassment, de apachurando. La estrategia long term, que se dice largo plazo, va a continuar a dejar a un sector de la comunidad al lado, marginalization, alienation. Por eso nosotros estamos aquí para estar conscientes y vos a su responsabilidad, a nuestra responsabilidad, sobre qué se necesita hacer, como un modelo comunitario. Vamos a ver ese modelo comunitario que va a continuar el sistema o va a cambiar cómo está el sentido de nuestra comunidad. Necesitamos liberación comunitaria y empowerment, community empowerment, y no continuar el mismo sistema que continuamos hoy, ya sabemos qué son. En el comité del consilio de estrategia del largo plazo, el comité no había ni uno, cero jóvenes donde. Entonces, para pensar afuera del cuadro, vamos a pensar en programas como Up to Us, que son nuevos, Esperanza, la comunidad, y otros que se están creando a este momento. Muchas gracias. To the Legislative Body.
One second. Can we all be agreed that we could let him do the whole thing in English?
Well, it's the same words in articulation in English.
Right, but obviously, it's running on extra on your public commentary.
I'm faster in English than I am in Spanish.
Thank you.
My words are to bring attention to the joint agenda item number 13. These words are from the Real Perspective Up to Us Program, la comunidad and esperanza. My words are to think outside of the CBO's traditional box model of social service and its youth services. The model provided by the Santa Barbara County Education Office and the triage delivery model has to be keenfully scrutinized. Why? The model in the table today does not cause, continues to cause the community harassment of its youth, the long-term strategy that did not reflect youth voice. There is not one youth on that long-term strategy committee that was wishful thinking and cognizant of what the students really need, or are we just formulating policies because we think that's good for youth? It is our responsibility for the implementation, if it goes forth, that alienation does not occur, that more police enforcement does not occur, because that causes harassment, that causes alienation. And as an academic policy body, just look at the goals, academic excellence. You mix the two together, you create harassments, incarceration and alienation, and the lack of academic skills to be productive citizens, at least in our community of Santa Barbara. So if we look at the civic educational system, we know who's involved. We know the 4,500 people involved. Those are the who's who of Santa Barbara. The same old story, the same old song. We have to think outside the box and be innovative about the services that we're rendering, or else we're duplicating and gainfully wasting taxpayers' monies. And I don't want to continue the harassment of youth. I'm a representative of police brutality. I'm a representative, I've been beat up, maced and targeted by police. It's on record. But I don't want that to happen to another youth in our community, on the west side, on the east side, because it causes alienation, and then we're here at the table discussing, what do we want for the youth? So we have to be mindful of that. Therefore, the civic legislative and academic policies being formulated are meritorious, but it calls for failure because the development of this long-term strategy council has no youth voices. It's a continuum of the status quo and the who's who of who we know. Change. Think outside of the box. Support programs like Up to Us, Esperanza, and la comunidad. Comunidad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Jacqueline Inda, followed by Eddie Gonzalez.
My name's Jacqueline Inda, and I'm here as a representative of a community organization called Esperanza in Santa Barbara. And seeing the models that are presented and the questions that were asked, it makes me think of different questions that we've been asking ourselves. In the city, we talk a lot about prevention and we talk a lot about intervention, and we see all these wonderful programs that do prevention work. But one of the key things that are missing within everything is our community involvement. We are experts about what's going on within our families, and our youth are experts about what's going on within their own communities. We need to involve them so that they're able to assist these kind of programs to actually be effective in the way that they would like to be effective. We need to know that our community is now recognizing that we do not have a intervention model, and we actually don't follow a prevention model. We have many preventative pieces, but not anything that provides curriculum within the schools to train parents on what to identify at an early age, or how to actually do intervention at an early age, different than intervention at a crisis moment. So, we have to look outside the box. One of the things that's really important is that there are many organizations and other cities that are actually looking at those intervention and preventions as models within a city, that a city could adopt those models and say, okay, this is the kind of program that we would like all organizations to follow as a strategic plan to stop youth violence. Youth violence is affecting all of our families, and we're the ones that are suffering, our community. So, as we see this kind of model and we see this program, one of the things that we hope is that when we come to you and we present a model that comes from the community, that you adopted and supported as well as you're supporting this program. So I will pass the mic on to a partner of ours who is working very closely is Up to Us. I'll have him present himself and explain.
Hi, my name's Eddie Gonzalez, and I'm here to represent Up to Us program. Up to Us is a-
Can you start the clock back in three minutes, please?
Well, Up to Us is a program created by the youth, and it was created by us because other programs don't really work for us. I've been part of other programs in my life, and Up to Us has been the most effective so far. So we hope for your support, and thank you for your time. By the way, we're going to have a car wash on Sunday, March 2009, sorry, I'm nervous. And we hope you guys can make it, you guys are all invited. Thank you.
Sorry, which Sunday and where is it?
Oh, sorry, it's at the Boys and Girls Club on 632 East Canyon Perdido. It's on Sunday, March 8th, 2009.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Gonzalo, and I'm here representing Esperanza. We have a plan for a change to help our community, and we need to try that impossible, because the possible is not working for us. And we hope you guys will support us too, and like you support other programs, so, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reels. Thank you very much, nice seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Smith, followed by Lane Wheeler.
Frances Morlepe was the speaker at the Frank Kelly lecture this year for the Nuclear Age Foundation, Peace Foundation. And she said, "It is not possible to know what is impossible." Her lecture was called, "Living Democracy: Feeding Hope." I'm so glad that this was videoed, videotaped, so that we have a record of the fact that after a year and a half of the administrators, the government, the schools, and the nonprofits, all they have done is talk, all they have done is meet, and they keep saying, "We're going to strategize and what we're going to do," and you have done nothing. Everything you just saw was from the last meeting, September 12th, you're still talking about that summer program and how great it was. You are so far removed from reality. There is a school-to-prison pipeline, the struggling in-school students, mostly Hispanic males, mostly minorities, all of them poor. Instead of nurtured and educated by our system, they are thrown out of school, they are criminalized, they are placed in jail schools that are toxic wastelands, you have removed them from community. The administrator, Armstrong, kept saying, "What they need..." Good God, what they need is community, what they need is democracy, what they need is compassion and love. Louis Andrews, the head of YankeeInstitute.org, wrote, "America's Public Second Civil War: The Public Employment Complex Versus the Taxpayer." There is a school-politico-industrial complex here in Santa Barbara, and it has spread throughout the nation. There is an unholy alliance between the schools, juvenile justice, the law enforcement, police, and probation officers, and 47 nonprofit agencies that feed at the public funding trough.
30 seconds, Kate.
Thank you so much, Mr. Herron. At the end of everybody's report, there was always, and we'll, we want your support, we want your resources, there was a line that said, "Oh, we had to cut back on our plans because of money." Money is not the problem, management is. It is institutionalized racism dismantling the school-to-prison pipeline is a seminal document by NACP, it is on ACLU and Marian Wright Edelman's-
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Wheeler, right?
Mr. Wheeler.
Good afternoon, and thank you, City Council and School Board, for a chance to speak. I'm Lane Wheeler from the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I just want to bring you up to date on, excuse me, two grants that CTA has funded and the local Santa Barbara Teachers Association has brought forth. One is being currently enacted at Santa Barbara Junior High School. It's part of a girls' core class that's outreaching to 12 particular youth, and we have a second and third component to that, both a parent-community outreach piece, an empowerment piece, and also a teacher-education piece to help our teachers become better involved and better educated about what kinds of signs they need to be aware. Also, we've done, I think, a very exciting piece with an extension of that grant to Franklin Elementary School. It's the first outreach, I believe, that's been done to an elementary school, where it's our opinion that a lot of those kids get a direction that can be redirected to a more productive course. So we're looking forward to that one. A beauty of these programs is the site is determining how this is going to look, and we're very pleased with that, and we believe it'll have a very important impact. We're happy to be players at this table, we have 850 teachers in our district, and it's taken us a while to get active in this, both, I think, institutionally and personally, so we are there now, and I'd appreciate Don Olson and also Mike Gonzalez's invitations to be involved in this. And a quick point of personal privilege, if I might, I want to let everyone know that March 13th, CTA and the Educational Coalition is also encouraging everyone to wear pink as an opportunity to call attention to our need to stand up for schools and to also look at the way we fund education. So, wear pink on the 13th, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
You still have 58 seconds left.
Is that it for public comment?
That's it.
All right. With that, we will move on to item 14. Oh, you do, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, from Mr. Olson, actually. I had this question before public comment, and then some of the-
The members brought it up, in terms of the organizational structure, and first let me say, you know, we've, many of us, like you said, saw this presentation a number of times, but every time I see it, something new has happened, and so, and there has been continual momentum. And just the idea of herding all the cats of public agencies together in one room is quite a feat in and of itself. The question, though, in the, with the organizational structure is looking at where do the parents fit and where do the youth themselves fit as an advisory group, as part of the, I'm looking at the slide that has the circles and the pyramid, because it does appear to look to be very top-down heavy as opposed to both directions, so I wonder if you could comment on that.
Yeah, we, at this stage, we have positions on the Leadership Council designated for a parent rep or a parent organization rep and a youth representative. But what we've also been discussing is, at some point, when we're better prepared, and we would be looking to Esperanza and others for help in this, is actually holding neighborhood forums or neighborhood meetings of some form, where we not just talk about what we're doing, but more importantly, engage the parents and the kids in those conversations. Obviously, this is going to take some time to put together and organize and get the word out, but clearly, that needs to be part of, not just the outreach, but the way in which we help structure better effort for how we move forward with all of our work. And the thought of engaging the kids in, I'm sorry, young people, in this effort is, for me, very stimulating, because I really appreciate that energy, and the more we can help those folks take this on and do positive things, the better.
Great, and I think Nancy Rapp mentioned it earlier, but I know our own community center advisory committees and how that structure works, there's real potential there. I know from speaking to a few members from both the west side and lower west side community centers that they want to be a part of this, and that actually might be a great community-based type of forum or way to make that connection between this very structured piece and reaching out to the neighbors and the community as a whole. So I hope, and I know you mentioned it very briefly in your presentation, but I hope that that's something that is, becomes an inherent part of this whole process.
Yeah, and I just wanted, one other comment in response to that. I think it's really important for people to understand that, yes, it's taken a year or so to get this, to get to where we are, but our focus primarily has been on the government entities, the major agencies and organizations that are, have mandated roles or are engaged in one form or another with this population. And it is like herding cats. They do operate in silos, and we have to break through those silos and bring people to the table and make those challenges. That isn't to say that the other work of what we can do with parents and what we can do with the kids themselves is not a priority, not at all. It's, you know, very clearly a priority, and we'll get there.
Thank you, Mrs. Quidero.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, I just had a quick question. If we want to make comments, if we had suggestions or comments for modifications or additions, how would we go about making those known?
Give us a call.
So, give you?
Sure, I mean, Brian-
Who would I?
Brian Michael-
Send it to our-
Right.
Okay.
And whoever would be representing the school board on the Leadership Council, you know, that's what it's all about. It's, you know, getting ideas, taking those ideas, working with them, building on them.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just for me to, I feel it's necessary, maybe it's on behalf of a group of us, we'll see. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to each of you who have really taken this on and taken leadership in it and not looked just at the short-term reaction to the situations that we've been facing, but to try very hard to institutionalize the system for support, because we don't know what the future holds. We do know it's going to have the needs over and over again as each generation comes through the system, and to actually build in the counter to the forces that will lead many of our youth into just a terrible tragic end, but to really help intervene, prevent, intervene, and again, if necessary, there's the enforcement side, but the fact that everyone's working together on this. And I really want to acknowledge one, this last piece, and that is, you just mentioned that it's an open system. And I think that's critical. I think that there's going to be innovation, there's going to be community groups that will come up, just as we saw demonstrated here today, who will have a new approach, an innovative approach, maybe a different angle, something very valid and completely different from what had been institutionalized, and that that is actually part of the system, deserves to be appreciated as well. But I really want to thank everyone who's put this together so far.
Thank you, Mr. Herron.
Yes, one other thing, you know, your slides are entitled, "South Coast Gang Task Force." Just keep in mind, we have Carpinteria School Board, we have Montecito Union, Cold Springs School Board, Glida Valley, you know, School Board, Hope School Board. I hope all of them, because they are dealing with the children that you talked about coming up, and I'd hate to feel that they were excluded from the process, so I hope that you include them and include them in the whole discussion, and sometime in the future, a school board position would be available to any of them also.
All right. With that, we will move on to item 14, Additional Matters for Placement on a Future Agenda. I don't know if City Council members or board members have anything to share at this point, or staff members, otherwise, as we come up with ideas, we will be letting our respective administrators know. And with no further objections, we've come to the end of our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.